To attend that or just stop in and say hi? There's usually music being performed. So it's kind of exciting. But other than that, it's only been a week, so.
Thank you. Do we have any acknowledgements tonight? All right. Moving right along. It brings us to new business, and we're actually going to flip A and B. So we're going to bring the trauma program certificate presentation up.
So I think we've talked a little bit about, we've been running a program, working with a group to run a program for trauma-sensitive students. And Ms. Wicklund has kind of taken the lead on this, and we've been having a ton of the staff get certified, which is amazing. So they're going to quickly talk about that.
Good evening. My name is Donna DeRoziers. I'm a school psychologist and also an adjunct faculty member at Leslie University. And my colleague Sal Terese, who is also on the faculty and is part of the trauma instruction, would have been here with us tonight, but he's teaching a trauma course in New Bedford, so he can't be here. So the Leslie Graduate School of Education offers a graduate certificate program in trauma and learning. And the courses in the program focus on the nature of trauma in school-aged children and ways to promote academic and non-academic competence for students who have been impacted by trauma, and the process for building safe environments, trauma-sensitive environments, and creating trauma-sensitive schools. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize the hard work, dedication, and all the accomplishments of the Sandwich educators who have recently completed this 12-credit program. I had the wonderful fortune of getting to know them all and learn from all of them throughout the courses. They are a group that each individual is committed to meeting the needs of the whole child and to provide safe and supportive and welcoming school environments to all their students and their families. And I think they have a wealth of information and skills to bring, to continue to bring to your district. So I want to congratulate them all tonight. And they're going to get a certificate. Do you want to read the names? Why?
Okay. Do you want to speak? So. They're very sensitive, those people, aren't they? So one of the things that, that research has shown us over the past few years is the importance of understanding experiences that students, that children have over their lifetime and understanding them in the context of the impact that it has on them going forward. So I don't know about you, but when I think about trauma, I think about kind of extraordinary circumstances, really unusual circumstances. And I would think that you would not have very many students who have those sorts of unusual, extraordinary circumstances. But the new feeling about understanding trauma is that, for children, as they're developing, there are a lot of things that have an impact on them that goes now under the category of trauma. A family that has, that's not all living under the same roof, for example, is a form of trauma. Losing a family member, food insecurity is a type of trauma. So the, so it's kind of like you have to open your mind to think about the circumstances that can have an impact on our students and what this program does. And I, and I just do want to say a couple of things. The course is four classes, and this is the cohort that attended all four of the classes. We have representation from Forestale, Oak Ridge, STEM Academy, and the high school. And they all worked together on a project within their own school. So not only did they have the benefit of the instruction with Donna through the classes, but they did a lot of work outside of class together as a team to help their school. There were 25 in the first class, probably a little bit fewer in the second class. And that's how it usually goes in this program. The first two classes are kind of more open to everybody, and the third and fourth class are for those who have that extra level of commitment, and those are the folks that you see here tonight. What's also exciting is that yesterday Donna started a third cohort in Sandwich. So in about four years, we will have approximately 70 staff members who have had either one, two, three, or all four courses. So I just want to also thank all of my colleagues for their commitment. Their class was from four to seven. Can you imagine on Tuesday nights, four to seven? And they came, and I visited a few classes, and they, the level of commitment, the level of engagement, the thoughtfulness, and the, it's just amazing. So.
Thank you.
I'll read the names, and you shake their hands and stuff. And Trish, will you take pictures?
I'm very busy today. I miss the classroom.
Oh, boy. Here's a test. Maureen. Maureen. Kathy teaches at the high school. She's a speech and language professional. And we have Jeff Carter, a special education teacher from STEM. Colleen Claybo, a grade teacher from STEM. I want you guys to know. Julie Crosby, first grade teacher from Forestale. Amy Delgado, health teacher from the STEM Academy and Sandwich High School. Is Cindy here? Cindy's not here. Shawna Mackey, kindergarten teacher from Forestale. Oh. Oh, good. Amy Delgado, health teacher from the STEM Academy and Sandwich High School. Is Cindy here? Cindy's not here. Shawna Mackey, kindergarten teacher from Forestale. Oh, you know why? Because it was your ma, it was Donna Hugh Mackey. That's why. Because you're maiden name. Yeah. Sorry. You were wondering why we are out of alphabetical order. Kim Emerson, third grade teacher at Oak Ridge. You could fake it, and then they could swap. Right? We're flexible. We have to be flexible. Maureen Ferris, special educator from the STEM Academy. You could fake it, and then they could swap. Right? We're flexible. We have to be flexible. Maureen Ferris, special educator from the STEM Academy. Carolyn Height, special educator from Sandwich High School. Mersh Canis, special educator, Oak Ridge School. And Abby Tarantino, special educator from Forestale. And we have one more graduate, Cindy Denmat, who teaches third grade at Oak Ridge, who wasn't able to be here tonight. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your commitment. That's to those at the end the most.
I was thinking, I was looking at all the names of children's former and current, and hopefully next year's future teacher over there. I am so proud of all of them. Without this, they cared about our kids, and without this, they did their hard work anyway. And this just adds to their wheelhouse. So it's quite incredible.
Right. That's, the benefit to the district is going to be immeasurable. That's, that's what the best part of it is. Because they'll ha, like you said, it's in their wheelhouse, Carrie. So. While they're here.
All right. And that brings us to medication administration policy first reading.
Go ahead. So this is a new reading that has to come from Nicola Borland, who's our new, even though, again, we do not have the nurse leader, we were able to put in a nurse department head. So Nikki does that for us, but she can explain a little bit more of it, because that's a whole world that I don't understand either.
So I think most of you know me from my years at Oak Ridge. I think I've seen almost all of your kids at one point or another. But so now I've taken on the role of the department head. And unfortunately, when our nurse leader left, there was a little mix-up with some paperwork, and we lost a very specific certification that we typically had from the Department of Public Health. So while working to regain that, we did a full policy review. And we found that our medication administration policy had last been reviewed and approved in 2009. It was signed by Dr. Canfield, a physician who is now deceased, and three nurse leaders ago. So it was quite outdated. So I worked with Dr. Bloom, who's our current school physician, to rewrite the policy, which minimal changes, more of an updating to reflect current best practice and the use of electronic health records, which we do now. And that's what we're asking you to approve.
Is this the state, our policy, so from the handbook?
Yes.
Okay. So which?
I know, which number? Yeah. Okay. Yep. Hold on, let me see if I can pull it right up. And do I read the policy, or do you read it on your own? Okay. So it does obviously go along with DPH regulations, the recommendations of DESI, the approval of Dr. Bloom, and what we can officially do under the Board of Nursing.
Can you summarize the changes that you made in the policy?
Honestly, the changes reflected the use of the software that we use called SNAP, which is a FERPA-compliant electronic medical record for each of the students. And the system has been a wonderful upgrade for us since we put it in place about five years ago. However, and the physicians' offices are also going electronic as opposed to paper. So a lot of the items that were in here spoke about handwritten, black ink, things like that. So we have updated those to reflect appropriately-approved electronic medical records, fax machines, encrypted emails. The basic rules for giving medication in a school have not changed. Physicians' orders required, parental permission, counting, storage of narcotics, things like that. Those are all the same. But it does reflect the names of the new staff, however.
Thank you.
So just quickly looking at this. One of my concerns from a school committee, like overview type of thing, is I understand that you are going, you report all errors to the DPH.
Correct.
But it doesn't say, under number one, that you report it to the superintendent, and therefore she reports to us. And then the second bullet, for the tampering, that gets reported to the superintendent and the DPH. I think from a school committee aspect, not maybe when it happens, but maybe a summary report that we would receive so that we understand what's going on. I think I'd like to see something along those lines. I don't know how anybody else feels. Especially, I definitely think that, I don't know what page this is, but medication error C1, I definitely think the superintendent's office needs to be notified.
That was not in the old policy either. That is something that, it's a, it kind of falls between the cracks, because I fully understand, but it's also a confidentiality issue with how much we can tell you about who it was, what it was.
But that happens in hospitals all the time, and they get reported to risk management.
To DPH.
But, no, but they get reported to hospital management and risk management, and all personal identifying factors are redacted. It's just saying, we noticed these errors so that we can look at a trend in how to, positively impact a situation rather than having something go off the rails. I'm not looking to get a nurse into trouble or something like that, but we do need to know to protect our district, the best way to do that. And I think some type of reporting back is appropriate, but I'm just one person.
Actually, that's a, that's a fair thing to add into that. So.
Does anybody else?
Does anybody else have any? So what we can do is we can hold off on voting for that tonight. The policy subcommittee can then reconvene, write in a policy to reflect that. So we'll table this for tonight, and we'll schedule another policy subcommittee meeting to make that, those changes.
Is that something you would like me to write up with Dr. Bloom?
Yeah.
The nurses have their own procedure for how, for the forms.
You guys know how to do it best.
Legally, right. What we legally have to do, so we can.
And you would still keep the files in a locked, that's not the issue. It's more like you've said, Carrie, not the who at all, but the situation, just to make us aware, because that could also have a public.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the typical thing I always say to the principals, anything that's going to go out in the public, make sure I know about it first.
Right.
That's all. Doesn't mean I need to know every single detail.
What happened, what the corrective action was.
I get what you're saying. So it's almost like just putting, having that statement in both of them.
Correct.
Or put it up in the upper paragraph so that it covers it all.
Someplace. But just, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Especially at your level.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Any other questions or comments, or? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Taking the time. She's doing a good job. This was a lot of work.
No, no, no. I wanted, I wanted to make sure you knew that. This was not saying that you, in any way, experiencing your hard work.
I did not expect my first shot at this to be.
We do this to all.
I miss you at Oak Ridge.
2020, 2021 school calendar first reading.
So we have been in conversations, Carrie and I, because she is your committee rep to the, the calendar. So what, the kind of the tact we took and have taken really is, we begin the process with our admin team quite early, talking about what we think went well or didn't go well with the current calendar. Kind of knock out what we think are some kinks. I then sent the calendar to Ms. Ames. We had a quick conversation about it. I've also met with the SCA. The SCA doesn't necessarily get to determine a lot of the details in the calendar, except for if, this is obviously a question that we might be violating the contract somewhere. So I have had that meeting. So essentially, you know we made a significant change last year in this, going into this year about these release days on Wednesdays. I had promised at that time that I would do a survey. So we've done a survey of the parents, and we've also done a survey of our staff. Seventy-five, twenty-five, in the sense from parents, really appreciate the new model. What they liked most about it, consistently what I heard, was the, kind of the routine of it. It's every Wednesday, right, Carrie?
Yep.
They know about it. They know what's coming. I mean, Wednesdays do come very fast, I will say that, for the admin team too, who has to plan the PD, obviously. But that's going well. The staff was a sixty, forty, still supportive, but they had much more kind of constructive. It wasn't that they wanted it to go away. It was more constructive, some of the things from our end, which we know, first of all, want mostly, but also needed to hear some good feedback. So we've had a quick conversation about it. I'm going to go into far more detail with the admin team of ways we need to make it better for our staff. That was their issue. It wasn't about the kids at all. We do have once, one little situation at Forestale where Mr. Dantino's struggling a little bit, because he struggles with the fact that parents know that if they're not at home, the bus will take the children back to Forestale. There's getting to be some people that have a little bit too much of a routine of that and relying on us to be their daycare, which we are struggling with. Mr. Dantino's going to be having some conversations. Every once in a while it happens, we understand, but when it's a routine for some people, and that's, because what's happening is, he's taking his staff to have them be in the office with, with kids that aren't just getting picked up. So we, we'll kind of address that. But overwhelmingly, we actually feel like it's, it's going well. We have some work to do, we think, on some of the, our own PD, but we're working on that. But the second piece of that is, that's still left for, well, more than four, but essentially four different opportunities for half-days. One is parent conferences in the fall and then the spring. Then we have a half-day before Thanksgiving and a half-day on the last day of school. So we looked, is, is there a way for us to maneuver it to eliminate half-days totally, except for the day before Thanksgiving and the June one, the last day of school? And so what we did, what you'll find on the calendar, is we were able to, on two of those Wednesdays, this is, most parents at home don't care about this, but on two of those Wednesdays, we get staff for another hour, so we get two hours of professional development. Which is fantastic, we love it. But we're getting a good amount of that now, so one of the things that we thought we could try this next year is to put the parent conferences into those. So in a sense, we're sacrificing our PD time to make life a little easier for parents, because now they won't have any half-days except for those two. Like literally none. So we've gone from two, three years ago, when I first arrived here, three and a half years ago, I think there were eight, nine or ten, eight or nine half-days, to none, except for those two days, which I think everyone expects, the day before Thanksgiving and the last day of school. So we feel pretty good that we took what a good momentum that we had and made it even better. And then this next year, just to kind of now get off of the release of half-days, this next year, we have a major, so two big things that we're doing. We have the major election, obviously, coming up this next November, so we'll still have our in-service day on that day, because it's such a big election. But we have, we've had a conversation, we've kind of notified the town that some of these smaller ones, that we're going to start not canceling school for that. What we're going to do, we think we have a plan, the elections will still happen in the buildings, but when, they are out right now in Oak Ridge and Forestale, and with some of our support, and we'll continue to do that, we believe that they can kind of go up on the side path, they can go in the gym, they don't need to go into the building at all. Instead of right now, crossing right through the main lobby, crossing all kids as they're going to lunch, and that's why we were closing, to now just being separate, as you know, and those of you with little ones, at Forestale and Oak Ridge, you can put up a gate, and doesn't even, and there's a bathroom there for people. So we're going to try, we want to try that, because especially this next year, there's so, we're closing down buildings for elections that aren't that populated, except for the big one. One of the town ones happened to also be on September 1st. As you remember, two years ago, we created the policy where if Labor Day falls on one, two, three, or four, we start after Labor Day. If it falls on five, six, and seven, we start before Labor Day. This is the first year that takes effect, because Labor Day is. This is the first year that takes effect because Labor Day is on the seventh. So latest it can possibly be in that sense. So we would be starting school not until September 8th. So this is, we're kind of glad for this policy because what's out is allowing us to do, you'll see in red, our teachers report on August 31st and September 1st, and then the kids will report on the second and the third and still have a four-day weekend. That's in the teacher's contract. But I like that too. I think it gives parents, I think it gives kids a way to kind of ease into it and staff it as well. But that, that week will be in and then come back in on the 8th and kids have their four-day week and then the following, they're a regular, they're into the routine. So lots of talking, I apologize, but that's where we're at.
Five, five elections this year?
It's ridiculous.
We have the, so spent, the, in March, we have the special primary for the Senate.
Correct.
Then the, the general, 31st.
Right.
And then, May, we have the town. Now we have another primary for the, for the Senate and then the general.
So it was just as, and I appreciate the town has, I, I do appreciate, I've talked to Taylor White about this, and I get that they, but I, I don't know, we can't keep closing, like the high school doesn't have elections at all, so they miss an entire day. I understand we do 180 days, I appreciate that, but it just goes longer and longer into June and, and as you know, that that gets, the high school's fine because they have air conditioning. The two elementary schools do not have air conditioning.
And one of our discussions was, 100% of schoolchildren are losing education for 2% of the electorate to show up.
Right.
And it just, it's not equitable.
Right.
So, and then the only thing that we were talking about was doing that poll again. We had talked about that like next year.
Yep.
When we've had a solid, full year for parents and for teachers.
Totally agree. And I'm fine with that. I'm hoping, I think they're going to like this no-half-day thing. Because again, you get into that routine of the one hour, and for the secondary, it really doesn't impact them, obviously. But for the, for the little ones, it does. But if you just get into that routine, whatever your daycare might be or your, we have that surround care after, you know, at school at the elementary, so that comes an opportunity. And maybe, and we've looked at ways to even make that bigger, to give parents that opportunity. Yes, Mr. Dever?
Just from a school. Thank you. Just want to know, from a student safety standpoint, on, on those election days, you were speaking about the, the gate. So that gate will be, will make a commitment to close that gate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Because that's obviously our concern and that's why the buildings were closed.
Kristen?
Yes, will there still be available times on the mornings of the parent conference teacher days? Are those?
They're not, the high school, the secondary is not going to do those mornings with this because this was the time that we had.
Okay. I'm just thinking that could be.
I know.
A possible problem because it's right in the middle of the working day.
Yeah, I know. And I agree, and that's a trade-off that we are doing. The elementary always had the afternoons anyway. So we're going to see how that, now, we all know, any teacher will meet with a parent on a time. So if there's something that's certainly an issue, we will do that. There's still going to be the night ones. Those will still happen.
How well-attended are the teacher conferences at the elder levels?
They're actually not too, too bad. I think the STEM is probably better than the high school. The regular ed, you know, the right, the core curriculum, I was an electives teacher. I would get maybe two people when I was teaching, but the core curriculum.
And what about the spring conferences versus the fall? Like I would imagine the fall are very attended.
Okay, hold on. Okay, Mr. Malkahie. Come on up, you can, I'll finish this conversation. Come on up. Get up here. What was that? Sorry.
So are the spring conferences as, attended as the fall?
Less so, I think, at the elementary level. Because again, they don't change. Now with the secondary, this is going to be also, it definitely wasn't in the, in the secondary because they had the pure four-by-four block. They were in all-new classes. So this is going to be an interesting thing for them now that the kids are in full-year classes except for the electives.
I think it'd be interesting to find out the matrix of each, to find out if, if we really need.
We use a program, so I, that's a good point too.
Do we really need them?
That's a really good point. Yep. Mr. Malkahie.
The only thing I would want to say is, is thank you to, to the calendar committee and Ms. Ames, because I know these half-days have been a thorn in the side for the last six years I've been here. So this is a.
We're trying.
Great job.
This was a win for us too, to be selfish. I mean, the, these Wednesday release days are getting us, one of the things that, an added benefit for us, which we had said last year, but we're really seeing it, is we have heard parent complaints too, that teachers get pulled out from classes too often to do professional development. This is, we are significantly down with the pull-out of professional development from teachers. So this is allowing us, we know we have that time, especially on those two-hour Wednesday ones for us, that is significant for us. So we get to do a lot of that. Now, we can't stop a conference that might be at Worcester or something, but I asked Ms. Wicklin that, and our numbers are significantly down with the pull-outs that we are doing, which is great.
I was just going to add to the discussion, there was a lot of questions about the conferences. So I was just going to clarify that. The, the fall conferences are far, they're, they're well-attended.
Yeah.
The morning and the night sessions. The spring conferences are not as well-attended. And to Dr. Gould's point, in the past, those were all-new classes for the spring for a lot of the kids. So you would think that the, the attendance would be around the same, but it's not. And now you'll see, my prediction, it hasn't happened, but now that we have the full-year classes, you'll see those spring conferences even be less attended. And I think it was important for us, the, the morning, the 7:30 to 9:30 time slots on those two days really forced us into very shortened days as far as the student schedules were concerned. And I think always when I look at the, when I look at the, the calendar, I always want to maximize time kids are in classes. So if we could combine the conferences with the early release times already in the calendar, it makes much more sense to save those other four days that we were going to have late-start days for students to be having more time in classes. So just, I understand your point completely, like it's a totally valid point, that's right in the middle of a lot of people's workdays. It might be tough for them to schedule times for conferences. We also have the night session. But it, it's a bigger, it's a big discussion, I think, in, in your questions and Carrie's questions, it's, that's kind of where the argument lies, like how, how much do we need at the secondary level of the set conferences, knowing to Pam's point that a teacher will meet with a parent at any time that they request a conference, and those conference slots are only 10 minutes long. So it's hard to really, if you need to have a, a longer conversation with the teacher at that point, it's hard to do that at that time because they feel the pressure of another appointment right at the door, you know, for, for the next session. So it's, it's a good discussion. And I think the idea is to try this, this, for next year and see how it goes. And this year's, with the current, we still have them for this year and with the new schedule to see how it works out. And we do, we do do an online program similar to, you know, the elementary schools, so it's good data for us to look at.
Thank you.
I just have one question, going back to the, the elections now.
Yep.
We had done this in the past where we had them in the gym. One of the, one of the, one of the big, I don't know, complaints or criticisms of it was especially for our elderly people who, by and large, are the majority of those that vote.
No, there's no question.
Getting around to that area for some of them was very tough. Is, now, and you may not have the logistics all set at this point, but is there something, is there some sort of plan for like a golf cart shuttle or something?
Yes, well, they do that anyway. One of the things that we are going to do is ensure that the parking lot right, walking up will be available.
Okay.
So we, on those days, we've already chatted with Mr. Dantino and Ms. Hill, we will have addressed the staff, they will park elsewhere.
Okay.
For that day. But then you're right, and I'm going to offer to the town, even if we have to rent some more golf carts for them, but I think we should be okay. And in that situation, then the walk is almost the exact same. Because if we get, leave that parking lot empty on both of those buildings, I think we should be okay.
Right.
But I understand, I do understand that, I don't want to minimize it, but I just.
I would, yeah, I would just hate for someone to not.
Accommodate that versus canceling school.
Right. And I would just hate for someone to not come and vote because, you know, they felt there'd be a, a challenge for them to get, to get over there, so.
That makes sense.
We can even tell them that though. You know, before, the meeting before the election, make sure.
Oh, we'll try to publicize it.
Publicize that this is where you're going to park.
There are options available.
It's probably less of a walk, I was just thinking.
I know, I'm trying to logistically think of it, but it feels like it would be a little bit less.
Terrain's a little different.
Try a little bit, but we can do some, I know they do some golf carts, but we could also do some more. And I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Any further questions or concerns? 2020 and 2021 school committee meeting calendar, first reading.
So we also put in there a tentative, just a first reading. There was a question at one point, one of the members had asked about potentially, just looking at what would happen if we did one meeting a month. And so I had, we did a, kind of a quick survey just amongst the Cape to look at that. And it's about half and half. Some districts, Barnstable has gone to one meeting a month, Upper Cape is one meeting a month, Cape Tech is one meeting a month, but then you still have, Monomoy has two. His is a little different just because of also the dual-town type of thing. Dennis Yamathas, too, Bourne only has one. Mashpee has gone to one and they start at 5:30. Superintendent loves it. But I'm throwing that out, you guys could do whatever you want, but it was a question asked, we didn't even put it in there, I'm just saying it was a question asked, addressing it. But what we presented to you this evening is kind of your, your two per month that we traditionally do.
Jim?
Yes, as a, as someone who'll be a retiring school committee member, do, do we want to meet twice in July and maybe twice in August as well?
Do we?
Do you guys?
We had done away with that.
No? All right, just, just wanted to check.
We had talked about moving till 6 o'clock.
Oh, I like that.
Versus seven. Sorry.
Sean doesn't like that apparently.
Apparently Sean does not like that, but he's retiring too.
Who knows?
But we had, how would that impact your staff if we, if we moved to six?
So if you, oh, not our staff, would be, we'd be thrilled, to be quite honest, selfishly.
How would it affect us as a committee?
You guys would have to.
Going 6 o'clock, yeah, I mean, actually, that makes it a little easier for me, you know? I just come, just leave work, come straight here, you know? For other people, that would be the same thing.
If you need me to bring you a snack, I can do that.
Will dinner be served?
If we meet at five.
We'll have the Abby group come every meeting.
We'll do potluck.
Yeah. The other thing that Michelle just brought up to me too is, at one point, a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, we, the, there was a discussion about whether we, instead of doing the warrants with every person, because every once in a while, as you know, the schedule doesn't fall into the warrant cycle, potentially, and this is just, we'll throw it out for conversation, you can, you don't have to decide anything tonight, would we do one person assigned as the warrant signer?
For the warrants.
Because that would actually make life easier, like I think of Mr. De Giacomo, who's like, it's a pain for him to get in because he goes to work well before we open the building and then, you know, coming home at any given time, so it makes it difficult. So we throw it out again, there are districts that do it, there are districts that do it the way you do it. There's no right or wrong answer. I would say if you did one person, make it, be the person that will really read it.
There's now one designated me and the board of school.
That was my, that was my question about not meeting in July, is how do we handle the warrants and getting people to sign them?
So either all of you come in and sign.
You'd either come into my office and sign them, and then we'd put the, the approval on a future.
Yeah.
Schedule.
We do, right.
Or you have a designated that signs off on them.
Okay.
So just think about it. It's not something you have to decide tonight. But that's something that we, the other option that we had talked about, if we want to stay with all of the members, is maybe potentially putting, in my previous district, we had a lockbox outside that you had access to for, like I think of Dawn trying to always get in early in the morning. So it's an option. I have, we haven't done it here, although Holly and I bought one, it was the wrong size, just because we're not sure how long we're going to be in that building anyway. So it's, it's something that we can talk about depending on where we end up.
I think we need to look at policy.
Yeah, I think we have to, we have to approve that anyways, so.
That's fair.
Maybe next time the policy subcommittee meets, we can, we can kind of just, you know, look at what, what's out there for policies and wording on that, so.
And just the next time? Homework.
So.
So there you go.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you. Brings us to old business and the FY21 budget.
Okay. So what I wanted to do tonight, because tonight will be mainly, we do have some of our costs in it, a couple of them. Mr. Murphy had a wrestling match tonight that he had to be at, and Mr. Hopper had daycare issues, but he is available via text if we had a question. He's, he's watching, I believe. But I wanted to kind of just, I'll do a quick review and then show you a, a couple of different items. Just as a reminder, the, we, we talked last week about the, but for those that didn't get to see this last week at home, the enrollment decrease is leveling off a little bit. Our tri-board recommendation, there was recommended that we try to stick within the 3% area for FY21. We had pointed out to you that our, and you have this in your previous budget presentation, that the salaries only were a 4.13% increase, and overall, we were at a five, 4.65, showing our issue now because again, the 3% doesn't cover us to do a level service budget. So just a review from last time. The other thing I wanted, before we kind of get into some of the detail of the budget, I need to make sure that you're aware. You also, it reminded me today too, but Mr. Kucher, I believe, sent you guys all an email. With the new Student Opportunities Act, part of that act called for, for those at home, the Student Opportunities Act was the, some, trying to address the funding inequities in the schools with regard to Chapter 70, with regard to special education, transportation, and a variety of other areas. But within that act, one of the requirements on a school district and therefore a school committee is, with additional money that your community gets, you are, we are going to be required to fill out a, quite a lengthy form detailing how we're going to use that money to address a gap in our achievement. So that's fine. There's a number of districts, very similar to Sandwich, who are anticipating not really getting a lot of money at all. And so the Executive Board of the Mass Association of Superintendents, and I believe in concert with MASC, pointed out to, to the legislative body and the commissioner that it's, from what I gather, a very lengthy thing to not have any money. And so could, is there a way to kind of do a separate, so my understanding, it was will be a very short document and a very long document. My anticipation is that we'll be doing a very short document. We're very clear, Maureen and I were talking about this today, I know exactly where we'll be because it's what we've been working on. You've heard us talking about really looking at our inclusion model and co-teaching, and we're working at it at the, at the elementary level. That, the reason, part of the reason we're doing that is, is our achievement gap is pretty significant for the special education population. significant for the special education population. So those students with IEPs and those without is a pretty, across the board. So I feel very comfortable, even if I had to do the long form, which I don't want to do, just because from what I can gather, it's going to be a lot of work. When we fill out our form, I have to bring it before you, you have to approve it. Because it's basically you, it's a money thing, right? So therefore, you have to approve it. We will be required to submit that form by April 1st. So it's a pretty quick turnaround in the sense of, the governor's budget comes out next week, so we'll get a little bit more information, I would imagine it's going to hash out a little bit after that too. But we're in the middle of our budget cycle, the governor's budget comes out, and oh, by the way, you got to turn around this very lengthy form and have it approved at a school committee and send it in by April 1st. So, there's obviously been some issues with that at the superintendent's level. But I wanted to make sure you're aware of it, and then I'll be coming back to you with some far more information when we see the governor's budget, because that'll dictate a little bit to what we're doing. But we're not, again, I appreciate the bill, the bill is looking, but the bill is going to deal with some of the significantly higher need districts than Sandwich's. They don't view that we need it that much. We can argue all we want, they don't view it that way, understandably to a certain extent. So, just so that you are aware of that. So a quick review of last week, again, we talked about the salary increases at the 4.13. The expense lines increased by 2.14. This is the same slide I shared with you last week. So the 4.65% increase, if we stick with the town's recommendation of the 3%, we can only go up 809,000, so that left us with a gap of $445,315. So that's kind of where we sit today. I just did want to show you a little comparison point. I went back, I only addressed the budgets that I was in charge of, in a sense. So I went back to FY18 was my first budget presentation to you, and if you look at this grid, I'll do a, you don't have to memorize it, because I'm going to do a comparison piece in a minute. But just take a kind of a general look at it. This is the one I presented to you last week. What you'll notice is a little bit higher in the salaries, but a significant, if you look now down at the bottom right, three changes that have occurred in those four years. Special education is actually, for us, has gone down 9%, down to 7% of our budget. That's, I think, some of the work we're doing. That can be also out of district kids, there's a variety of reasons there. But generally speaking, our special education budget has decreased in those four years. The supply line has also decreased, which is one of the things that I said the other night, is it's kind of hard to continue to slash a supply line with that's only 1% of your budget. And we, but we have been doing that in the past four years. And then that's, therefore, the salaries have gone up. And that's kind of a normal attrition, those that are pretty good at math. If it's taken away from somewhere else, it's going in a different direction. So, just kind of as an overview, especially for the people at home, we're pretty much sticking somewhat consistent, but it comes, I wanted to go back to, there isn't much, many other places that I can cut from, aside from the staffing. And that's where we're at right now. The other thing that I wanted, question? Yeah, please.
I just want to point out, because I get questioned a lot about the salaries.
Absolutely.
And so for people at home, and you could probably explain this better than I can, but our, since I've come on board, our, so, in the past five years, this committee has negotiated 2% across the board raises, and then the question I hear is, well then why is salaries 4%? And what people don't understand is, yes, it's 2%, but steps have happened, educational reimbursement, conferences and travel. And so then the follow-up question is, well, why don't you just stop the steps, or do zero, or have them do 0%? And I said, we just went through mediation. But my point to people at home is, these steps, the longevity, which trust me, I have tried to get out of every freaking contract I've been involved with.
Yeah, she has, I'll vouch for that.
Education reimbursements, and as it was pointed out to me, that only enhances our district, even though it costs us money. But those have been in teachers' contracts since 1492.
Yep.
All of those things predate this committee.
Right.
So, we are doing the best we can with salaries, but these are things that pre- Dr. Canoni has been in.
Sure, absolutely, long before that.
It's not something we can just negotiate out, we try, I fail longevity, but that's why, am I saying this correctly? That's why the salary increase is over 4%. Yes, we are, can imagine if we didn't negotiate 2%, where we would be. So it's not from that standpoint that we are doing, because we're being bandied about that we're doing a poor job with salaries, and it's not true.
Not at all.
And I want that out there.
No, I agree with that. And I think, so, two parts that Carrie is, agree with you, that all of our contracts, at this moment, every single one of our contracts, has no more than a 2% increase. Individual standalones, everybody. So that's an area that we've been working on, because that's not what I inherited either. So I think we've been very judicious with that and working hard with that. Nobody expects people to take a 0% raise for all of their career. That's not fair. People at home don't do that, I don't care whether you're in education or not. So, it's a reality of a cost of living, and we can appreciate that. This area is in there. So Carrie brought up the idea of cost reimbursement. What's important for people to know too, if you looked 30 years ago, you wouldn't proportionally, I even, I'm saying this, wouldn't be spending the same kinds of money. What had also happened was, and Carrie made a point of saying that, because, and I don't even exactly remember how many years ago this was, was the Department of Education changed the model that we now, every five years, have to, by law, get recertified. And what we need with that is professional development points. That didn't, it used to be like that 30 years ago. So that has been a change, and that costs districts money. Understandably, that's part of a negotiating point for any staff, and I appreciate that. They don't get 100% reimbursement by any stretch of the imagination. But new teachers are now required to have a master's within five years of having their license. That's significant, or teaching.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, that money goes on to their salary line, not a supply line, which again, bounces that up. I just want to make sure that people understand where that number comes from.
Right, and I understand, if people haven't been in the fields of unionized, I get that they don't understand that, but there are also fields that, I know, in my own family, they pay 0% to their health insurance. They pay 0% to take a course that they might not even then stay in that profession. There were benefits in all kinds of contracts that people have. We have some, we don't have others, that other people would have. We still pay some, a portion of our health insurance. So, my brother doesn't, in his company. That's just the way it is. For whatever reasons, that's the way they work it out. So, I do get frustrated, but I've been in this field a long time, so I understand it, but I think that's important for people at home to understand. And I think, most importantly, and I know Carrie, because I'm in the negotiations with her, she's very judicious about this. So the next, go ahead, sorry.
Jim?
Oh, sorry, Jim.
If we are talking, if we are talking about salaries, under Oak Ridge, for classroom teacher salaries, it says it goes down by .07%. For Forestale kindergarten and classroom teachers, it's an increase of 2.15%. The high school is an increase for classroom teachers of 2.53%, and the STEM's an increase of classrooms 1.11%. However, it looks as though most of this comes from SPED. Can you explain what SPED's all about? Because for instance, in SPED, Forestale, there's an increase of 17.41%, and in SPED Support Staff STEM, there's an increase of 96 point something percent. So what's the difference between a classroom teacher and SPED?
All right, so there's a number of layers to the stuff, can I, I'll try to do as best I can to address, I'm going to go back to the little bit of the beginning, Jim, and then try to, and Michelle will jump in with the special education. So, when you're seeing this jumping in and around, there's a couple of different factors in there. One is that what you might not be seeing is a staff movement, because you're looking at, in the document you have, and this is hard, because you guys don't live this every day like we do. You might see an increase and think it makes total sense, but what's behind the scene that you didn't see, was that a teacher then might have moved from here to a specialist. So that's the behind the scenes work that Michelle has to do. So you're just, where you'll find that is in the staffing, it doesn't apply directly to the salaries, obviously, but there's a staffing line where you can see movement from one thing to another, in that, I think it's Section 8, 7 or 8. So that's a piece of it, Jim. The other piece of it is, what might seem erratic in the increases, is what Carrie talked about earlier, is the step and lane changes. Because again, if we've hired a new teacher for grade one, they've got two increases that come up. They go to step two, well, might have two increases. They can kind of go down and over, if you look at our grid. So if they've done some coursework, they go over, just years of service, they go down. So depending on the year that that teacher is there, is where their salary line is going to fall. So, it looks very inconsistent to what you're seeing. We have it on the backend, in which the union does ask for all the time, is where is everybody on the grid? Because they want to know that too, and I appreciate that. Do you want to ask before I go to the special ed?
No.
No, go ahead, you can ask that.
So then the special ed piece is what, part of what we've been talking about for years now, is that there is an increase, what you can see is, again, if with this movement within, moving a teacher into special ed, depending on if one retired, they're moving up on the pay scale, we also have ESPs that are, if we have a student that moves into, we've just had three, for example, this year at the elementary level, students that moved into our district, their current IEP has a one-to-one ESP written into it. We have no choice, it's the law. So we're hiring. We don't enjoy it, but that's what we have to do. So there's aspects like that. Michelle, do you want to jump in also to the second?
Another part that you're seeing is that some of the questions that Carrie sent are like, how are the specialists increasing? Because as we have regular ed teachers retiring, we're moving that position into the specialists or into special ed for the social emotional issues that the district is dealing with. So that's why those areas are increasing, probably like 17%, while the regular teaching area is going down. The other thing you'll notice is that, when you see like Oak Ridge teaching only go up by 2.1%, you can be pretty sure that we lost a teacher on that line. Because an average increase is like 2% for COLA, which is what is negotiated, but we average about 1 3/4 to 2% for step and lane changes, and about a half a percent.
Which is where the 4% comes in.
And about a half a percent for longevity. So if you see under about a 4.5% increase at anyone's school, that means that staffing has either been cut, or they've been moved to a different area.
So while you like that number not being significant, it's arbitrary in that sense, because it's a person gone, or two people gone.
Okay, thank you.
To follow up on...
It's confusing, but, not, to you, you probably understand a lot better than some people at home.
To follow up on Jim's point about the dramatic increase in STEM special ed salaries, is there a correlation with an increase of students at the STEM level, and a decrease in out-of-district placements at that grade level? Because as we were talking about earlier, traditionally, that's when we start getting kids at 7th grade, they're gone from the system. So is that why we're seeing, so are we actually getting a, I'm not writing this correctly, are we getting actually a cost savings, but it looks...
We recognize the savings if the child stayed in the district. You're also seeing movement that as the child leaves Oak Ridge and goes to the STEM Academy, if they have a one-on-one assigned to them, that one-on-one goes with the child.
Right.
So those positions will move to the next school.
But you would think that those positions would stay consistent somewhat, because now that 8th grader is going to the high school level, and you're not seeing the increases there, and you're only seeing the increase at STEM this year. We didn't have this dramatic increase the past five years. So I guess that's my question, have we...
There also has been like a change in philosophy, sometimes, they weren't doing that like three years ago, which now they are doing that.
Okay.
They used to be, you know, whoever was at the school is who dealt with the children when they got there. Now they are moving with the child.
Okay.
So there is a change with that.
It's a lot. I appreciate that. And you guys, again, you look at this thing once a year to sort of understand that. Go ahead.
So I looked at, like, if you look at the pie chart, it looks like special ed is only 7% of the pie, which, you know, is true if you don't count salaries, but I looked back through here, and the total special education cost is 25% of the budget, and 20% of that is special ed salaries. And I'm just wondering, I think it's important that we obey the letter of the law and the IEPs or legal documents, but what steps are we taking to control the rising cost of those special ed students?
Well, I think one of the things that we do is, we assess the IEPs at all turns. So we have Mr. McNamara's, our brand new special ed director, so we keep thinking he's going to run for the hills, because we keep proposing him with things that we need him to look at. But one of the things, and we talked about this last week, was this area around our full inclusion or co-teaching model, is, that's an area that we have identified, to be quite honest, we think we have far too many, they're wonderful people, working hard, but far too many ESPs. I would rather, personally, as would Mr. McNamara and both the elementary principals, have two full-time certified teachers in the classroom helping these children, than just continuing to just kind of put another body. Now, there's layers to that, though. There's IEPs that have to be met, there's, and you're in the education world, and you understand that. So this might take a little bit of time, but we are working on the philosophy. It just, it's not just that easy that we snap our fingers and say, we're going to do this, this is going to cut all this kind of stuff. But that's an area that we're definitely looking at, without a doubt. It's getting out of control. The only thing that makes me feel better, is that every superintendent I talk to goes, is going through this exact same thing.
That was going to be my next question, is this, do, you know, is that typical for other school districts to spend 25% of their budget on special ed?
And it's hard, because we feel bad talking about it in this public setting, right? Because it makes you feel like, we don't want to educate, and that is not the case. It is truly just a matter of us acknowledging, and especially in Sandwich, and I've talked about this, this is a significant shift with the need of our children that wasn't like that. For some of the parents at home that educated their children, their own children 10, 15 years ago, this is a different, it's different. And we need to acknowledge that, we need to work at it. Do we need to do our due diligence and try to keep the cost in line? Of course we do. And we're trying, as you look at, we've gone from nine to seven. We are looking at things that we can try to accomplish.
So you say, a lot of other school districts are having a similar problem. I'm just, are they going to a co-teaching model and finding that that is an effective way to meet the instructional needs of the students, while, you know, maybe being more efficient with funds?
Yeah, that's, I think that's an avenue, there's, so I, some districts already do it. My understanding is Sandwich did for the most part, in one of the K-8 buildings, but not as much in the other. So it definitely went a little bit by the wayside. Go ahead, BJ, just sit down. But the other thing a lot of districts look at is out-of-district placement versus do you create programs with inside? So a lot of districts will look at that. Is there a way to, if we have enough students that we could create a classroom, that absolutely saves money. Now, we get the circuit breaker reimbursement, so you got to weigh that out, is it worth it? But that's an absolute area that districts are looking at too.
Okay, great. And I don't mean at all to imply that, you know, it's very important that we meet those students' needs, but how do we balance?
Yeah, as Michelle said, that's how Spinnaker started. It's a cost benefit to know that. And I would always prefer to keep our own students in our district, I think almost every parent would prefer to have their children serviced in their home district. Sometimes you can, and sometimes you can't. And that's the hard part. Mr. McNamara's up there.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the MTSS, so it's Massachusetts Tiered Systems of Services, sometimes we call it RTI, Response to Intervention. So this is a model that is both financially sound, but also provides services appropriate to students. So it's not just trying to cut out a cost. It's very proactive, and it's something that Maureen Wicklund and I have been really putting our heads together to try to figure out, and it's providing services at the youngest age possible. So we're really looking at providing universal screeners at very young ages, even looking at phonemic awareness, very basic language skills. And if we notice that a student isn't at their developmental level, they're a little bit low, we just provide the services. It's not special education, but it's providing that service at the time when we first indicate that there's a weakness. So it's that, what's the saying about a teaspoon of sugar? So it's that preventative piece that we're really looking at. So it's, that's one of the biggest things that we can do now, but it's something that we won't realize the cost for until later down.
When they're not on an IEP with all those extra services.
Right. Because what's typically happened is we've had the wait-to-fail model, right? So we have special education, we won't provide a student with an IEP unless you're failing a certain amount. If you're really, if you're kind of close to the average, but you're a little bit low, it doesn't, we're not going to do anything, but you have to have a significant gap. Now, we've moved away from that model, but this is just another component that the state and even the federal government for many years has been encouraging us to do, and that's what we're doing as well. The federal government allows us to spend even 15% of special education funds toward the RTI MTSS service model, just because it will eventually decrease that service. And if we can lower the number of students who need IEPs later on, by providing very preventative care at the very beginning, initial onset, very young ages, then that's what we're trying to do. That's probably the biggest cost-effective and appropriate service that we can do in Sandwich, and that's where we're putting a lot of our energy on.
That's very heartening, and I've seen that system be very effective. I'm an elementary school teacher myself, so I think early intervention is wonderful, but that is a longer-term solution, I guess. What can we, do you have any ideas in the short term of how we can control spending as you implement that very worthy program? And we still have the other system while we're phasing it out.
So that preventative piece that we're talking about with the RTI, the other thing that we're looking at is with that school psychologist. There's a lot of different things that that school psychologist can do. There are many roles, there are many different activities that they can do to help students before they get to that level. This is at K through 12, this is not just at the younger level. But also Carrie brought it up, the special ed teacher that we need at the STEM. We have a large number of students who are leaving the district around that age range, and this is something that we will spend more money on now, but there'll be a huge cost savings later on. How later on? It could be even next year. When I'm at a 6th grade IEP meeting, and a parent is concerned, or an advocate is concerned about a student not getting the services they need, and they're saying, well, hey, this at a district, or this at a district, and we want you guys to pay for it, if I say that, you know, look, we've developed this program at STEM where your student is going to be serviced appropriately, it's a no-brainer. We have a lot of parents who want their kids to stay in district, they want them to hang out with kids that they know in the neighborhood, but they just feel like they're not doing their job as a responsible parent by allowing them to go someplace where they don't feel like the education's going to be appropriate. So that is going to be a big piece to incur some costs later on, and we're talking about those costs, or out-of-district costs, then there's transportation costs on top of that that get very exorbitant, very, very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all very encouraging, I guess it's more, you know, that's long-term, and I love that you have a long-term plan, I think that's amazing, and thank you for bringing that to our district.
Sure. And we're in a very good place right now as far as Sandwich goes. The state average of students on IEPs is 7.8%, and Sandwich is right there, 7%. There are many districts much, much higher than 7%. The district that I came from was much higher than that. So we're actually doing quite well with the percentage-wise, we just hope that we continue on that trajectory.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions, though, very good questions.
Any further questions?
All right. So the next slide that I just wanted to show you and to the people at home, again, as I was going back looking, so I did a little grid here, and the first, I did it again, back to FY '18, the first column, well, the second column really, is what the tri-board, for those at home, per the bylaws in Sandwich, we have a meeting the first Thursday in December with the school committee, the board of selectmen, and the finance committee, and there's a discussion about, again, guidance. They're not voting on anything, they're not doing that, but just pretty much some guidance based on information that the town manager, Mr. Dunham, has provided as to where he thinks the town is at that moment. So each year prior to this, the recommendation has been 2.5% this year. I think with a little bit of the money coming in from a variety of sources, they felt comfortable, and the fact that they pretty much have been putting us at 3% anyway, at least, let's go with the 3%. So you see the next column, I provided you the information, on our very first budget, we presented you with that level service. That's what the level service was at that time. And then the final column is what we ended up with a final, and you can see in the bottom right, I put a TBD. Just to kind of give an idea, is it each year, we've tried to stay as close as we could, but each year it has gotten progressively. If you'll notice, the difference between the tri-board recommendation and the final budget increase has gotten a little bit bigger each year, because again, salaries continue to go up, and we have to recognize that. So that was more just informational. So what we're looking at, again, what I had made the comment, and I say 10 to 11, and I say that because it depends on the positions, if we stick with this 3%, I assured, and I sent an email, you've probably, if you might not have read it yet, but I sent an email to our staff today, one of the things that I'm adamant about is, and you'll, I'll sometimes hear it, and I've been a part of this sadly before, where teachers will run around and think, I'm just cutting teachers. We do an audit of every single position in the district. We, as I mentioned to you last week, we have the kind of draft of where we would go, I'm not going to share that because so many things can happen between now and then, but that's why I'm using, give or take, about 10 or 11 positions, because it depends on the salary of that position and what that saves us. So that's where we're at. It's not exciting, we don't enjoy this, but that's kind of where we're at. So as I said to you last week, I've looked at tonight's meeting as more just kind of a conversation, is, in a sense, it's a little bit of pressure on you guys, because where do we want to be? And when I'm not saying we're going to finish this conversation tonight, but if we're beginning at that 3%, which cuts 4.45%, where do we want to end up? And as a committee, that's what you get paid the big bucks for, so to speak.
I think it's important for people to remember that you're not the one laying off people, we are.
I know, but I appreciate that.
But that's why we need to really...
You know, I wouldn't say we are, I'd say the town is.
But we decide what budget we present. And so that's why it's so important that we ask all these questions, is it's our name on these people's resignation, on their letter. So that's why it's so important that we, you know, drive you insane, asking you questions about grants and then asking it wrong, so that we got each other confused.
Yep.
We have 24 people on grant, 22 people, I think, on grant, something like that.
I know, we were doing that number back and forth.
We were going back and forth, and those 22 people aren't reflected in the budget. They're reflected in the staff, which is what was confusing the crap out of me. But they're not, that's 22 people, such jobs are being saved because of grants, and we don't want that, we want them in our budget.
We don't want to rely on that.
So the fact that we, on top of that, have to cut potentially 10 to 12 people is...
Well, one of the comments, if you remember, my first year here, some of you weren't on the committee, but one of the things I was very concerned about was school choice, for example, that we were using every bit of school choice to staff. I had concerns about that because, and I think I said this last week, that there is a contingent of superintendents, and understandably so, more urban, that lose a significant amount of kids to school choice away from their district. They want school choice to go away. So whether that happens or not is a different argument, but my concern at that point was if everyone of, every penny of that is being used to fund positions, and that would go away, they're not going to send those kids away, right? So they're going to let the kids finish out their careers here, we'd have to come up with that kind of money. So we were starting to make, we are, we're making movement to try to transition what we're using that money for. We still have eight positions in there, but the rest of that is the technology. If you remember, I said, hey, if they do away with that, so we don't buy technology for one year, we'll live. I didn't want to cut all those teachers, but we can't get down to even more than eight. It's a tough nut to crack there. So we're relying on that.
Don?
So, I mean, I guess we start the discussion, right? I'll keep it as brief as humanly possible here. I appreciate the fact that every year, the town has come with a, as you said, a suggested budget increase, they're not mandating anything, and that each of these years, we've requested a higher amount. And I get that the appetite for that is probably getting lesser and lesser each year. I also think that as a superintendent and as a school committee, we are charged with keeping the best interests of the students in mind, and frankly, we've all been charged with keeping kids in this district. Now, we are showing, there's been reorganizations of schools and programs instilled to do that, and the numbers are showing that that's now happening. There is no possible way I will ever vote for a budget that would cut 10 to 11 positions. I mean, that is, there is no way anyone could ever tell you that that won't have an extreme impact on the students of Sandwich. I don't care whether that's split between, you know, if we call it staff positions, you know, administrative positions, teaching positions, whatever that is, that is a huge number of people that are involved in the students' day-to-day lives. That can't happen. We have cut everything else that can be cut. I mean, it's clear as day. If you want to say there's a line item in here somewhere that maybe $4,000 could get cut out of in a supply line, sure, we can agree that that may be the case. But I also know that, having looked at this for several years, I don't know how to run a school. I fully admit I don't know how to run a school, but there are people in this room that do and have been doing it for a long time and are telling us, this is what we need. And if we go out there and say, well, you know, this is just what we have to do, we have to cut $445,000 out of it, we're going to lose 10 people, whatever those positions are, people are going to run for the hills to other districts and to all the options that are out there, because there are options out there, and they don't cost you money, and there are lots of available things to do. The precedent, the message, is exactly the opposite of what we are here for. Now, I'm also not sitting here at this moment, because I don't know exactly how I feel about it, saying that we need to go back and ask for the 4.65%, because I can appreciate that that's probably not realistic. I mean, they're suggesting three, we say 4.65, it's going to be, hey, we've given you more every year, we've got to find a middle ground. And there may be a middle ground, you know? And losing one person that works for the schools is a terrible thing. I'm not saying that that isn't going to happen, because I mean, that may need to happen at some level, but just my two cents, there is no possible way that that can happen.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly side with Don. I mean, we've been here for six years, and in six years, we cut services every single year. And I just think it would be the harm to the school system to cut 10 positions. I don't know how you bounce back from that. And I can't get in my head, I know I go over and over, you know, this building itself was 175 years old before it was refurbished. Now you're telling me 10 years later, there's a new town hall. I just don't get that. The town should know what these salaries are and should be better prepared planning. There's no way you can tell me about a new town hall, frisbee golf, all this stuff, and yet every year we have to cut teachers. We're either not getting enough resources from the state, or they're not being spent the right way. And you can't, time and time again, shortchange our public schools. It is what makes a town go. It increases property values for everybody. It just, that, it's just unfathomable that we're going to do this yet again. So I side with Don. I don't know what that percent is, but certainly more.
And just to that end as well, obviously, we're all taxpayers in the town of Sandwich. We know how high our taxes are, and that's, everything you read online is, you know, with these taxes, we should have plenty of money for the schools. But we don't, because it's literally the only revenue the town has. That also can't be the school's problem. I mean, we have students in this town that need to be educated. The fact that we refuse to allow businesses in town to generate revenue can't be our issue. I mean, I'm sorry, but that's the fact. And the town, we are, the town is spending money. How the town chooses to spend its money is, again, on those people who should be in the position to make that call, and if this is what they've decided, I hope and believe that is the right way to spend that money, but it can't be at the detriment of our students and our schools. It just, it can't.
Carrie?
I don't believe we need to ask for over 4%. I think that there's things that we can do, but I have a hard time getting my mind around, we need $445,000, right? How much did we vote for a frisbee disc golf thing? How much did the piano cost? Like, I'm having a hard time, and I get it, everyone has their own interest groups, I have my own, you know, personal things that I am very indebted to and I want to see funds for, but I think that, I think we can find a middle ground. I don't think we can do 3%, I think we're going to have to ask for more than 3%. But I think, you know, you have the chairperson of the finance committee on Facebook saying that, you know, he and his committee are never going to support an override, which we have never even proposed. It's crazy. And then you have, again, these expenditures that do help our town as far as recreation, and those are draws for the town, just like good schools are, but we have to find some type of medium. So I guess, what if we did something similar to last year, where Dr. Gould brings back three different scenarios of what different percentages look like? I mean, what does the committee think about that?
Would those reflect, like, what position, I don't want to get into what positions she would offer up in that, but would you be able to say we can save X number of positions with X percent of dollars?
Sure, well, I mean, if, you just did simple math here. Use the 10 just for a nice, easy number. If we cut $225,000, it would be five positions, again, using very, because that's all-around salaries, so, and that's half of that. So the simple, and Michelle's the true mathematician here with the percentages, but again, so if you kind of put somewhere in the middle between 3.0 and 4.65, it would be, give or take, a little of half of that, a little over half of that.
I just want to make sure, and I don't mean to keep hitting this point home, but I don't want Kerry Ames to be the reason why someone goes on food stamps.
I know.
And the people that we would be laying off live in this town, the majority of them, they're your neighbors, and they are serving your children, and if they're not your children because you don't have kids in the school system, they're your neighbor's children, they're the kids that are begging your groceries. So it's very important that this process, that we dedicate the time and effort to do what we can.
So let me also, you guys know this, because I think you've seen me go through this, for the people at home that are watching too, I am passionate when I have to do cuts, and Michelle also knows how stingy I am with our budget, and I'm passionate to try to, I've gone through my entire administrative career in the central office, not having to lay off a person. In my previous district, we went through the recession, and I'm so proud that we didn't have to do it, we worked at it. So when I say to you that I will make every effort to look at empty positions, I don't want a person on the street either. There are areas that certainly, depending on what the person's certification is, they're going to get a job tomorrow. It's just, that can depend. But what I look at when I'm looking at this is, I look at class size, I look at programs and to say, what is successful, what is not successful? Again, I don't knock out administration, I look at it all. We look at every position, is what is really needed. There are positions that I'm looking at now, and I think I've said this to you over the past couple of years, that I probably knew we didn't need, but I didn't want someone losing their job, so I said, I'll wait until the retirement comes, type of mentality. I do that all the time. I'm constantly doing that. Michelle and I and Maureen Wicklund, that's what we always talk about, because I don't want a younger person to lose their job, that's typically what happens. So we wait, and that's what's happening behind the scenes that you guys don't see all the time. And I think one of the things, I don't toot my horn very often, but that's one of the things I'm most proud of, the work that I can do with that. I have a lot of experience with the personnel stuff. So I can, so Jim, to go back to your question, I will, depending on where you end up, if I end up with 10 or 11 positions, that's off the table, I don't have a choice, there will be people impacted. But if we can minimize that damage a little bit, I agree that one of you said it too, I'm not sure the 4.65 is the answer either, to be quite honest. I'm not sure that the appetite would be there for that. But if we could find a middle ground, we will work to ensure as best we possibly can that it doesn't impact a person. Now, that being said, sorry, let me just, that being said, if we come in again at under-level service next year, it's going to keep happening unless we kind of address the systemic issue, because at some point, it is going to be. And this is what I've been saying to you for two years that I've been afraid of, we've taken all the empty, the ancillary things that I can think of to get to this point. So that's what my concern has been. Sorry, Carrie.
If we lay off 10 people this year, and next year they come back in at 3%, and we say, okay, well, it's going to be, it's going to be 10 people a year, and pretty soon, it might not be this year, maybe the class sizes can absorb it, but three years down the road, you're still here.
Yes.
It's going to be, like you said, it's a tough decision.
Well, one, I don't know if Dr. Gould will still be here if she has to lay off 10 people.
Yeah, I know.
I sure as heck would run for it. But at any rate, just to clarify, this number here, the 4.45, that doesn't include any anticipated retirements, I mean, announced, yes, but if there's...
Correct.
So there is a potential...
It was up until we did the budget.
Potentially likely could be a couple that may or may not, but we don't know, we don't know, and there's no way to know that, and I understand that. And I think that's the other point, is like Kerry was just saying, you know, you have expressed this concern every year, and I think we've all been perfectly cognizant of it.
Absolutely.
And it is at that point. So again, the 3%, it's a number, and it's not an arbitrary number in the sense of, I mean, I know where it's coming from and why we want to stay there, and everyone needs to be fiscally responsible, totally understood. But it's irresponsible to eliminate necessary parts of a properly functioning school system, and it's just going to get worse each year, you know? So I think, this is beyond here, but you know, that conversation has to continue too, that we can't keep doing this every year where it's being recommended at 3%. If we know, you know, can we provide you before this meeting with what our level service budget is to say, hey, we're at 4.5% level service, can you consider that before putting out your recommendation? Because now it looks like we're at odds. I don't think we're necessarily at odds. I mean, there's people trying to run the town that have a pot of money that they have to distribute to do all that.
Everybody.
I don't envy that job. But you've cut everything that can be cut, and we need to have these schools function. So that's all.
You know, in some of our previous conversations, you know, private conversations in regards to cuts in the past, you know how I feel about, you know, cutting, and you know, if you can always reduce spending, I think that's a great thing. However, I share the opinion of the rest of the board, that there really is no appetite to balance the municipal budget on the backs of our schools again. So, you know, Jim?
Just one question, could you explain to people at home what exactly spend is? I mean, is it for a student that is disabled, is it for somebody that needs help reading, speech impediment? What exactly is a spend? How does that work so people know?
So, no, that's fair, that's fair. So special education really is a big bucket, in the sense of, if a student has a significant, let's use significant, just reading disability, they can be put on what's called an individualized education plan. And it might just have some minor modifications, it might just be a sitting, where they sit in the room, it could be a little extra support, to the extent of students that get placed out of district because the need is so severe that we can't meet their needs. So it could, again, could be as just simple, some extra support in a classroom, all the way up to, and I kid you not, spending $400,000 on a child.
It's also the homeless, the foster...
The homeless, the foster, yeah, thank you.
The free and reduced lunch, it's all of those things fall into spend.
And the cost, the concerns that I have, again, I didn't grow up in the special education world in the sense of a teacher, but one of the biggest concerns I've always had is, when we place a student out of district, that's fine, there's a, you, we have controls, mechanisms that are controlled within our town. The town says you can only spend this much, you can only increase your contracts, increase this much, et cetera, et cetera. We get increases, we have a contract right now, and somehow this got approved at the Department of Education level, we have an out-of-district placement students whose costs are going up by 25%. We had no say in that. We just have to do it, because it's been approved.
In a school that already charges $275,000 for education...
So that's the behind-the-scenes stuff that a lot of people don't, and I get they don't understand it, they don't need to, except for how it is impacting us.
And as we struggle to get to 3% from over four, remind me, or correct me, isn't Bud projecting Upper Cape's costs to be 7% increase this year?
Yeah, they've been 10% in the past.
So 10%, and granted, that's a small minority, that's a small part of our school choice budget and all that, but 10% for maybe 100 students go there?
I forget exactly how many, I have it in our...
Versus, so 10% for, it's very small, less than a kindergarten class, and we're cutting 400, we need to cut down to three. So there's inequities throughout.
And I don't want to pit us against Upper Cape, I'm just, but I agree, yes, their percentage increase has always been at least two to three times what ours is.
The school choice, you know, it might be a child that's a typical child, a unique child, whatever, the entire budget goes with that child. Not, they might not be on an IEP, they might not need that special education dollars, but we lose all that money when that child goes out.
I still have to run the buildings.
Right, and it's not to, in my mind, it's not putting us against the municipal side. They have true costs as well, they have steps and ladders, they have different things. They, I would bet if you looked at any of their budget, other than probably the DPW, most of it is salaries.
Sure.
And eventually, they're going to get hit at the same level we are.
Yep.
I mean, I know...
Percent, yeah, proportionately.
Proportionately, but they're still going to feel, at some point, the rubber's going to hit the road on that side too. We're just hitting it sooner because we're bigger.
We're bigger. No question about it. Fun conversation, isn't it?
My other idea was better.
So, so this is where we're at. I mean, I didn't necessarily think we were going to have a decision tonight, but it's, and this is the hard part for you guys, that you have a job to do and you have to represent the entire town, and I appreciate that too. So the question is where we go from here.
Is our public hearing next week or the 28th?
So this is the question. I had thrown, and again, I will, I preface this always with, if you don't want this to happen, just say no. I have, I am part of, and I think I've shared this with you guys, I sit on a board at the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association called Tournament Management Committee. You should probably know this anyway, but the MIAA is actually kind of blowing up how they've done tournaments, which is going to be happy for a lot of people. And we're going to actually move to true state champions. It's kind of an exciting model to go towards. That's fine, you could care less about that to a point. We're getting at the point now that it's going to become a, a vote amongst the principals and the athletic directors, and therefore the superintendents. And so I had been asked, because the Mass Association of School Superintendents meets next Tuesday, Wednesday night, and because I'm on the board, they had asked if I would go and present to them. I explained to them that I do have a budget meeting, and, and if I, if I can get there, I will. So I had emailed Carrie and Sean and just said, typically what we do is we end up canceling what ends up being the last meeting of the month, because again, we can hash this out as long as we want, but eventually a decision has to be made. So we usually do our public hearing next week, which has been posted, it can be canceled, but, and then we usually take, you voted and we're done. So I had proposed the option of, if we're only going to do one, and this is where it's your call, if you think we have two more meetings than us, then that's, the answer's no, that's a no-brainer. If we did only have, need one, do the 29th. That actually also keeps us on a two-week cycle.
For warrants.
And for warrants. That's not the be-all and end-all. So again, I posed that to you, it's not the, an emergency, it would just, they would, it would help them if I was there, but they can live without me. So I throw that at you.
Could Ms. Wicklund sit in for you here?
Of course, of course. I just, I feel a little passionate because it's the budget, but absolutely, she can. She's done that before. She'll be doing it in February when I'm at my national conference, her, her once a year.
That's what I'm saying.
She is the assistant superintendent. Yeah, but I, to be fair to put her, this is a very stressful conversation.
Put her on the public hearing.
Yeah, there you go.
Speaking just for me, I'm comfortable pushing it off to the 29th.
It's up to you guys.
Gives us a little bit more time to look this over and see if...
Get some feedback from your constituents.
Hear from the public as well, yeah.
If you choose to do that, so what we'll do is, Holly will cancel the public meeting, we'll repost, we just have to do that by Friday, obviously, for two weeks. And then we can go that direction. If, again, I mean this seriously, you have to be okay with that, because it wasn't an emergency, but...
We're not asking for a vote, but do we have a consensus on, on, on the meeting schedule?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we'll have a public hearing on the 29th, and then we'll, you know, again, you guys have to, this is the discussion. What also might be able, the only good thing there is, we've had some pretty in-depth conversation here. This will maybe allow us to have a conversation, me, to have a conversation with Mr. Dunham. He'll get to feel for where they're at, he's kind of getting ready to present his budget to the Board of Selectmen also. My present, just so that you know, and if you want to put it in your calendar, I found on the finance committee, I, our presentation to the finance committee is on February 11th. I found that in their documentation.
We have negotiations.
I know, that was, we were going to have to talk about that. Either I would, it's at 5:30, Carrie, so I mean, again, it's not our meeting, I don't have to open the building.
Oh.
So I just have to be here, and I'll be ready to go then, so. And I believe, I think I, I thought I put the Board of Selectmen one in too, maybe I didn't. I don't know if I have the Board of Selectmen one then.
We have to deliver our budget by February 3rd, but we don't present it that 6, do we?
I, I have to ask Mr. Dunham. I, I thought I had the Board of Selectmen meeting presentation in here, but I don't for some reason, so I'm not quite sure why. So let me see if I can find out when the Board of Selectmen presentation is. I do just know the finance committee is on the 11th. So if you want to put that in your calendars.
Do we know?
Charlie's in the audience. Charlie, you don't know when our Board of Selectmen presentation is, do you, by chance?
When it was the 6th, I was like...
I think so, but I, for some reason, I thought I put it in my calendar, and I don't have it, so.
That makes sense.
I'll check with Bud. So pencil in the 6th.
Do we know when we get the final figures from the Commonwealth, how much we get? Because there was a huge surplus this year.
I know, yeah. Next week, the governor's budget comes out on the 21st? Is that right? I think it's the 21st, 20th, 21st. So we'll have a little bit of guidance at that point, Jim.
All right, thank you.
So, yeah, I think according to the towns' bylaws, you guys just have to have voted so that we can forward it on to the town by the first week, by February 1st-ish, that beginning.
Ish.
Ish.
I like that bylaw.
If you go earlier, that's great.
I have a quick question.
Please.
Is the budget available to the public?
Well, I thought what I'd do is after tonight, I didn't know how tonight would go. So I actually do plan on posting all of this information, because then I can do my, my presentations and, and things like that. So yes, after tonight.
All right, I think...
I figured it'd get us two weeks in before we, you know, in case there were changes that you had decided to make tonight, so, but I can post everything.
Okay, I would encourage you to do that. I think that's great, because transparency is always helpful. And that way, people, members of the community who are concerned about the budget can, can really take a detailed look at how we're spending our money. And I think, you know, the more I looked at it, the more I saw how, you know, how closely those numbers are being managed, and how, all the efforts that are being, being made to cut costs where we can. And as we conclude, I just want to say that we seem, seems like we have a short-term problem and also a long-term problem. And I, I think we all love the community of Sandwich, and we value our, its students and its teachers and its older residents as well. And I hope that as we go forward, that we can reach, hopefully, we can work together to compromise to find a solution to, to the short and the long-term problem. And in a respectful way that shows that we value each other in this process.
Yeah, nobody wants to pit people against each other in this. That's, that's not at all what we're trying to do. Those that don't know me, I'm a pretty fiscal conservative in that sense of, I ask my principals, I don't just let them buy anything they want. I think we've really, really worked hard at this. We knew it was coming, but this is the discussion, and this is, this is the hard part, and it comes to this in a lot of towns, is the values of that community. What is it that the town, if we were asking for 10%, I get it, throw me out the door, I get it. But that's not what we're talking about. We're just talking about keeping our services. And, and I go with Carrie, in the sense also of not doing outrageous raises for people. We've been pretty conservative there, generally speaking. So that's just, it's a discussion that the community has to have amongst itself, and that's the hard one. So I do think you guys need to talk with your constituents, find out what people are thinking. Yeah, no, I hate these conversations. Has someone saw me at the last, a staff member came up to me on last Thursday, like, okay, doom and gloom. It's like, now I got a reputation.
Please, I said, remember, you like me in July. You hate me all of January.
That is true, that is true.
Are you going to post our questions, maybe?
Yes, so thank you for saying that. So I've, I had one set of questions today, so I have answered those, I've given you copies of that, I've tried to take one of another set. I'm going to try to pull together, Carrie, because you had done, and we've also answered some here last week, not online, so I'm going to try to pull all those together. Yes, I post all of that, so that people have those same questions, they can have the same answers. So I will post all of that too. And I'll keep trying to keep them up to date.
Any further discussion? All right. Brings us to warrants. It says that we have none, but we actually do have some.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
So, so I will take...
I move that we accept the warrants as presented.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Kristen. Do we have any discussion on the motion? On warrants, rather? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's the minutes of January 8th, 2020.
I move that we accept the minutes of January 8th, 2020, as written.
Second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Jim. Is there any discussion on the minutes? I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. PTA, PTSA, Special Education PAC, School Council, and Board of Selectmen report.
I don't, I think this falls under this, I'm not even quite sure, but it probably maybe is, oh, never mind, liaison. I'm going to talk about something else now, on the liaison.
All right. So Liaison Advisory Committee reports.
Okay. I had sent to you today, those of you that have been on the committee for a while, you know, every single year, we, through the Mass Association of School Committees and Glenn Kuchar, we do a legislative breakfast at the Cape Cod Collaborative in Osterville. And, and it's pretty well-attended. I mean, there's, there's some, usually the chair might be able to go or somebody else, depending on the availability. It's hard because you're all working people now. But what we're doing this year, we've been having, and I think I've made you aware of this, we've been having some really rich discussions at the school, I mean, at the superintendent's level about the demographics on the Cape, and what that's meaning to us, and what, what is the impact on us, and, but we're pretty much at a stalemate, saying, okay, we can keep talking amongst ourselves, but where is this going?